Good evening. I'm called to order a meeting of August 4th. The first thing on the agenda tonight is the minutes of July 14th. Do we have any, anything regarding minutes?
Recommend approval of the minutes of July 14th, 2005.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval not required. Brian, I don't see any plans. We don't have any. So there's nothing there. So Bob, I'm going to put you to work right away and read the draft decision. This is, this is an applicant's Woods Hole Golf Club site plan review to reconstruct the golf course clubhouse and facilities located at 130 Quissette Avenue. Plans drawn by Holmes McGrath.
Okay, motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of Woods Hole Golf Club, Inc., under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled "Site Plan Prepared for Woods Hole Golf Clubhouse in 130 Quissette Avenue, Woods Hole, Mass. Prepared by Holmes McGrath, Inc., dated June 19, 2015. Scale one inch equals 100 feet with the following findings and conditions." Findings: The applicant proposes to raise and reconstruct the clubhouse at the Woods Hole Golf Club. The parking area will also be redesigned. The existing curb cut and entrance drive will not be modified. The proposed clubhouse will be constructed in the same area as the existing clubhouse and the golf course will not be affected. The Falmouth Fire Rescue Department is satisfied with the location of the proposed fire hydrant per their referral dated July 7, 2015. The Engineering Division is satisfied with the drainage design containing any runoff on the 46.3 acre property per their referral dated July 10, 2015. Conditions: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 240-183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met.
Any discussion? Yes, Ralph.
Yeah, that's quite different than the one that we received electronically. And so, this is the first time I've seen this because it's, it's a lot different than the one dated July 9th. So I just, I would just like to know, or just like to indicate that it's desirable to get, the one that we're going to be voting on, excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong, wrong one. I apologize. I'm, I'm looking at a different, at a different application. Sorry.
Doug, anybody? Are we ready? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move it, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? That's it. The next one is discussion. Building elevations in the FEMA flood zone, flood hazard zones. And I'll read this. This is under 240-13 definition. Add to the following to the end of the existing definition. This is building heights. Okay? For any property located in a flood hazard overlay district, minimum building heights shall be measured from two feet above base flood elevation where the structure is located as shown on the official FEMA flood insurance maps. The two-foot freeboard above base flood elevation shall not be used for habitable space. This is different than was discussed previously. It's now including both the A and the E zone. It's not just, I mean, the V and the A zone.
Jim, I'm wondering if we should take this paragraph by paragraph for discussion purposes?
I have no problem doing that. I think it's something...
Yeah, because I think that's a good idea, Pat, because the building height is, this is the definition section of the bylaw, 13. And then this section here is actually the overlay district. So you may want to...
I already have my breaking down.
Fundamental question of...
Yeah. That was, that was really, I thought I wanted to ask everybody, and start with you, Ralph. Have you had time to look at this?
Yes.
It is, is, what is your feelings on changing the way we define building heights to conform or to take into consideration the new flood maps? I'm going to ask everybody. I'm asking the person...
Yeah, but rather than, hey, rather than pinpoint a question and ask us, let us, let us throw out things so we can get it that way. Because I want to ask what this means in two feet. Is this meaning, if it's a 14-foot elevation, the 35 feet, for the public as well to understand, does this mean that if there was a 14-foot flood elevation, that the 35-feet building height would be counted at that 14 feet and above? Is that what this is meaning?
Yes.
For this definition purposes?
Yes. Mr. Gore gave a presentation on this and it's, when he talked about it last time, we were talking just in the V-zone. Now it's the V and the E-zone. And we're adding two feet. So when you look at your flood map, okay, and if you're in a V or V or an E-zone, say you're a 13, and your ground level is, is five, or let's make the math easy, three, you're adding, you're 10 feet. You're letting them go up another 10 feet. Basically, anything that the FEMA is making you raise the height go away, you're not losing off the top of your building. So buildings could be as high as 45 feet in some areas.
Okay.
Make sure the board understands, it's base flood elevation.
Right. Not ground.
Plus two.
Plus two feet.
So if you're at elevation, if you're in an E-zone at elevation 13, you start the bidding at elevation 15.
Or if you're, like we have in West Falmouth and North Falmouth on Buzz's Bayside, you're in a VE-zone of 18, they start at 20. They're adding two feet to it.
So that could be a 55-foot building?
Well, assuming, the house would have to be built on sea level to be 55 feet.
I'm just saying, but, but for the definition purposes, this definition would allow in that area to have up to a 55-foot building height.
Well, I don't know about that. I won't agree with that. But very high, 40-plus.
So if you were at, if you started at elevation 20, you could have a 15-foot high structure because the building height is still 35.
Right. Okay.
The average grade.
From, from, I'm sorry, from your, from your start of your building, right, that base flood elevation, that's, that's the bidding point. So if you're at elevation 20, and that's your start of your sill grade, which is two feet of freeboard, then you have 15 feet for your building. You might have a one-story building.
Right. If we didn't give this kind of relief, we're basically cutting off the top story of a lot of...
That's what this definition does. We haven't increased the height above 35 feet. It's just that you start at base flood elevation plus two.
Right. That's what I meant. But it'd be 50, could be up to 55 feet above the ground, the actual visual ground that people walk on.
No, no, it's, it's, we need to take a step back here. It would be, your sill grade elevation starts at 20.
Correct.
Okay, 20 feet above sea level.
Correct.
The vertical datum of 88. So that's where your sill grade is. So if you're at elevation zero, and you start your sill grade at elevation 20, then you've got 15 feet. So it's 35 feet above elevation zero is where the top of the building will be.
Now.
And under this definition.
So this definition, see, my, my question is, I was thinking that this definition gave them beyond that, but this definition isn't giving them beyond that.
The next thing does.
That's why I just, I'm trying to clarify, looking at this, where we are with this definition.
This definition brings you, instead of being at national vertical datum 88, zero, we're saying you have to elevate your structure to 20. It's not grant you anything, doesn't give, that's the, that's the bottom line.
Okay. That I understand now. That makes sense.
We're not giving you anything up here yet. It's up to you guys. But this definition starts the bidding at vertical datum elevation 20. Let's just, let's go arguing that. I'll put it in discussion first.
I guess I don't really understand the language then because when I'm reading this, it says for any property located in the hazard overlay district, maximum building height shall be measured from two feet above the base flood elevation. So if you're measuring the building height from two feet above the flood elevation, then you are giving them that extra height.
All right, then we'll, we'll clarify that then for you. We're starting your base, the base of your structure at elevation 20, but you get, right now, you're getting 15.
Right. I think there's some wordage change needed there.
Yeah, that's true because as I'm reading that, that, that starts, the measuring starts at 20 feet, and that's why I was asking that question.
What else up? This language here for definition does not change the building heights. That's under 240-70 and in E zones. So if you look at that, it says the basic maximum building height for principal structures is two and a half stories, not to exceed 35 feet. And for accessory structures is one and a half stories, not to exceed 15 feet, as measured from the base of the structure to the highest point. And then there are a couple of exceptions in here. And it doesn't change that, it's just changing where we start measuring that height in the flood zones.
Instead of average natural grade, it's base flood elevation plus...
Planning.
Where does it start, Mr. Commission, do you?
We can clarify here...
But before we make too many changes, one of the questions I'm going to ask everybody is whether we want to do this at all right now. This is a pretty big change. We're going to go, we have everybody weigh in. Ralph?
Well, first of all, this definition is, was developed by you, Brian, interpreting what Eladio said to us and what, and what you read? Is that, is that, the verbiage here is yours?
Actually, we modeled it after Warwick, Rhode Island. So I get to give them a little credit here, but we fit what we discussed the other day with Eladio into their bylaw.
Right, okay. I was going to say, are we, is there an opportunity to plagiarize from some of these other towns that have already done this?
Never reinvent the wheel.
Okay, so, okay, well, that, that's, I think, I think that helps. Personally, sure, I like to discuss this now, but I would, I would like the staff, whether the staff could develop just a sketch on a piece of paper. How it's determined, how the height of the building is determined now on one, maybe at the top of the page. And then at the bottom of the page, give us an example of this. Because visually, I think it's going to be much easier to understand the language here if we can relate it to something, and we don't have to put it up there or anything, but just a handout for us.
I'll probably do a PowerPoint so that we can see...
That would help me.
Sure.
That would help me.
That's open, we will have it for your next meeting. Because I think we have examples out there from FEMA. I will just put them on a PowerPoint, put them all on the screen, everyone can see it.
Yeah, okay.
We actually have pretty good examples right on Surf Drive. Some of those houses that have been put up, some don't get, you know, they're not to the limit of what they could do, but some are close. I don't personally feel...
Go ahead.
I don't personally feel like we should allow 35 feet above the flood elevation. It's just too big. And I think when these houses are going to be raised, they're not really going to be raised, most of them. They're going to be rebuilt at the new height. So you can't really say it's a hardship not allowing them to lift these houses to that height because I don't think that's really going to happen anyway. Think they might have to make plans for a redesign of the house. It's just my feeling. I just don't think we can go that tall on our coast. Doesn't seem right.
Paul, how do you feel?
I got two comments on this. One is, I think you should tie the base flood elevation to something, whatever the federal government dictates or whatever it is, I think it should be tied in where the base flood elevation comes from. And so it is a definition, I think it's appropriate to put that in.
Paul, I believe it is. It's the FEMA flooded maps plus two. It's tied to the FEMA maps and they're adding two feet. So it is tied in.
It is tied in, okay. The second comment is, the last sentence, I don't think belongs as a definition. That belongs down on the freeboard. Because the fact that it's habitable enough has nothing to do with the building height.
I've been wrestling with this. The idea of having buildings that could possibly be 45, 50 feet up in the air really bothers me, especially in light of current building code only requiring, or a minimum code as to 110 miles an hour. I would be inclined to, if a building is up a certain number of feet above, that it should meet a higher wind code as well, whether it's 180 or 190 miles per hour. I also agree with Doug that it isn't going to be a hardship for somebody that is going to be able to afford to, to lift this up. And that, you know, I've been toying with the idea of setting another height limit in whether that's 40 feet, so that if you're being raised up to 20 feet and that's where you're starting from, you're only allowed another 20 feet above that. So that's kind of where my head is at with this.
It's going to really change the character of our town. And I would be inclined, Eladio said that mostly we're not going to see any changes until the property changes hands. That, that's when the higher, really high insurance rates are going to kick in and a lot of other things will kick in. And my feeling is that if these houses are wiped out, what do we do? Do we really want to pay for the infrastructure to be redone? I think this is a discussion we need to have. If the infrastructure is wiped out too, like a sewer line, water line...
That is a different question, Pat.
Yeah, I realize it's a very different question, but it also comes into here because what are we going to do? Do we want to increase the height and let it all be rebuilt if that happens? Because that's what Bob sort of brought up too.
Well, I guess my, my question to all of you, do we even want to pursue this now?
We should address it.
So we should, Brian should...
We've been advised that these people that are already...
So we should have more discussion, they should bring more graphs, modify some language and bring it up again. That's what I'm hearing from everybody. Want to keep talking about it?
Brian keeps mentioning Marshfield, and I don't know... Situitism? Okay, I'm sorry.
Peggy Beach.
Maybe we need to see what they're doing too.
Lower Harbottle's planner there. If you want to take a look at what they've been doing for the last 20 years, they have been elevating structures.
Okay.
Because they are the competitive loss capital of the United States, the highest competitive loss town in the country. Want to take a look? We can get you up there.
Can you get some more data?
The thing about this definition alone, this definition and creating this definition allows, as I'm seeing it, would allow that structure to be built. And the fact is, is it may not happen a lot, but we have to remember, if you change that definition to what this, what I'm thinking this is right there, and somebody has the resources, you can't stop them from putting a 55-foot tall house. They go, we don't care what structure you want, we're going to put it up. And that's what worries me about changing this definition as it is.
I'd be careful with the 55 feet. I don't believe that condition exists in Falmouth.
Well, I'm, but I'm just talking about a 35-foot house with a 20-foot...
I understand, I'm just being careful.
No, but didn't we, didn't you say we had a VE-zone of 18?
Right.
With plus, a plus sea level, plus two, that would mean that would be 55 feet high, wouldn't that not?
Above the sea level, but probably not the ground level because the ground level's always higher than the sea level.
Just saying.
But still, it'll be big.
Yeah.
The other thing that, I mean, the reason we're in this position is the government incentivized people to build in risky areas by providing insurance for them when the house got knocked down. So is this going to be another way to incentivize people to build in places where they shouldn't? And the other side of that is, this is the most expensive property in town. Would we be willing to sacrifice 700 homes that pay some of the highest taxes in town? And what that would do to your tax rate? And, you know, we talk about infrastructure and all this other things that we want to do in town. You take a huge hit like that with properties dropping off the tax rolls, how does that affect the town and the character of the town as well? I don't have any answers. I really wrestle with these, these concepts.
Well, we'll have some more discussion. Brian will bring forward some diagrams and we'll bring it up again.
Okay, what we can do is, I'll, I'll do that. Sounds as though the board needs a little clarification on how high we can go. I heard Bob say, well, maybe instead of the 35 feet, we can add, you know, 20 or what it might be, to give somebody maybe a story. Do the board members want to take a look at another community, South Shore Communities? I can, I can arrange for that. If you can email us some days, you might be available before the next meeting. We're going to meet again next week, either the 18th or the 25th. Right now, it's a good idea next week because you're going to have a very large subdivision in front of you next week. So maybe the next two weeks, if you get some dates, and I can coordinate this, perhaps visit with the Situ town.
So is this a field trip you're talking about?
Yeah. You want, you say you wanted to see what it looks like, and there's something like a little firsthand, you know, take a look at it. If that's what the board wants to do. If you don't, we won't do that. You can always go on your own. But if you want to go as a group, look, you know. And any time, I'll put together some of the schematic diagrams. And it sounds as though the board wants to go forward, at least in some fashion, a little bit hybrid here of some relief, some relief from the, from the height restriction. Maybe not 55 feet in there, but maybe like a foot forty. And then some visuals. And we'll work on this, we'll fill this in a little bit more. We were going to put some dates on this and that so we had a little guidance from the board. You really want to move forward? You will? It's not, Bob is right, there's no easy answer. And there's no right or wrong answer to this. It's going to be one of the public policy this board wants to bring forward.
And, and that was my question to the board members, do you even want to address this? That's what, that's what I was trying to ask.
I think we have to. I mean, it's here. I don't want to shirk this responsibility as tough as it is. There are people out there that are waiting for answers, and I think we just have to do it.
Then I'll make it a little clearer too. The vertical datum is the, I'll make sure that boss comment, I'll clarify that a little bit. It's geared to the vertical datum of 88. There are benchmarks on these plans. So I'll try to highlight that a little bit greater.
Jim, your question, do we even want to tackle it? If we don't tackle it, what is that going to mean?
It means that if someone's house gets knocked down and they had a 35-foot house and they're, they made up with a 15-foot house by the time they have to go rebuild it up, they could lose the top, you know, third of their house. It's a possible, there's some locations in town that that could happen.
And that is if we just leave it exactly as it is right now?
So nothing would be higher than, right now, we measure, as Doug mentioned, is all builders. No, they take the average of the ground and they, they tell you what your elevation is and you come from the average of the ground up. So if you're biddled in the side of a hill, it is higher, depends on what suburb. They average it and they say, here's what you go for, and it's 35 feet. If we do nothing, it won't change the height of the buildings we already have.
I needed to have that spelled out so everybody...
Sounds like we need a lot of clarification here. It's worth another visit.
And if we do nothing, it's actually sort of negligent our, our part, and then somebody who is in a tough situation could possibly sue us for a relief.
Sure.
So if we do address it and say this is our new position, reaffirm whatever it is, then at least we've addressed it.
So what I could do is, I'll do, I'll do examples of the do-nothing option.
Yeah. That's, that's important.
That's a, that's a planning term, isn't it?
Yeah.
Believe it or not, sometimes the do nothing option is the preferred option. You might, you might decide that.
Ask Ben in Washington for that.
Do nothing option, then with the new definition of height, base flood height, and then with some options for...
So should I, should we even go into the overlay district, or should we wait till...
If you have any guidance for us, any questions, any clarifications, this is the best time to do it. This is, this is a draft, so if it's not clear to you, that's why we'd like to come to you and go back and work on it some more.
I have some comments, Jim.
Go ahead.
Yeah, on the overlay district. In the first paragraph, I thought it might be nice to say under purpose, some, some verbiage that says that the purpose of it is to minimize the risk premiums or insurance, maybe add that as a benefit to the town. Then in the second paragraph, I think I know what NFIP means. Is that the National Flood Insurance Program? Okay, but, but that, that, that wasn't spelled out previously, so when you have a, an acronym like that, it's nice to have that spelled out first.
Sure.
On the second line, at the end, I've got, these are just little typo things that I can probably give you afterwards. It's a special flood hazard areas include, should be an S under area. In the third paragraph, the first, the second letter should be flood areas, not food. In the next paragraph, it says, the exact boundaries of the district may be defined by one. So why wouldn't we say they are defined by one of the base flood elevation zone? Why do we want to leave it open with the word "may" instead of using the word "are"? That's, that's a question.
Okay.
And then in the very last paragraph, the, like the sixth word in, expressed in feet, above the flood level.
Somebody must have been hungry at lunch, right?
Chicken feet.
Yeah. But those are small things, but...
It's fine.
And then, and then Paul said that he thought the two-foot free board thing in the first paragraph of the top should be down there in definitions.
That's a good comment. We won't move that.
Drop that down there. That's, those are my comments on that, on that area. I thought, I thought it makes sense. It's very difficult. I mean, for instance, in the, in the one, two, third paragraph where you've got all the different zones there, to define all of those zones, somewhere would be pretty voluminous. But if, if, if you're going to have, if, if you're going to have a developer or an applicant look at this, or an attorney look at this, I think we should be able to say where those definitions could be found if they're not there. You know, parentheses, reference, blah, 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 something.
Yep, because what will happen is, that's a good point, Ralph. The last sentence, we have left that blank. The firms that are wholly or partially in town are panel numbers. We'll actually list all the panel numbers. That'll be the reference. Because believe it or not, all we really have in town now are zones AE and VE. The E designates that we know, as a known elevation. We included all the ninety-nines and AOs. Who knows, the maps might change someday. We threw them in there. But we'll make sure that's, that's highlighted a little bit, so everyone understands. We'll have panel numbers there for you.
Help me too.
Yeah, it's, it's not an easy topic. We'll reference, you know, the, there's the flood insurance study, the FIS, in the next paragraph. We'll tie those two paragraphs together a little bit, so people know, you know, all, all the gory details are located on these panels and in the FIS.
All right, thanks. And you may want to consider different, different rules or different regulations for the different areas where the flood elevations are that much higher. I don't know if we will. I'm just beginning to think of it.
You can do that. If you can do that.
Like the Silver Beach area.
Right.
You've got a lot of large elevated houses already. And that's where the flooding is higher. Maybe there could be a little more latitude there. I don't know. Just for thought.
Good thought. Might take a little bit more doing, but you know, you could, you could disaggregate by panels, you know, and, or by, on the Buzzard Bay side, the heights might be not as great as on the Vineyard Sound side. You can, we're looking at that.
Just to make it a little more difficult.
It's not gonna be my problem. It's gonna be someone else's problem that works in the office. No, that's a good point. We'll take a look.
Yeah, I had one other thing I forgot. Eladio said that people could, could seek a variance if we make a modification of, or an addition, or create an overlay district and, and the building height, and that, those kinds of things. I guess the variance would be for the overlay district. So he said that's, that's a possibility. So, so I can't remember, I think attorneys and people that deal with this all the time understand that variances are an option to applicants in these, in many cases. And so I was just wondering whether or not we ever, in our, in our bylaws, whether we ever say relief could be, can be sought through a variance, something like that. I don't remember saying that in our...
No, we typically don't, Ralph.
Yeah.
I think what Eladio was alluding to, people are actually applying for variances now. But variance, very strict, you know, the criteria for a variance, you have to show that your property is different than surrounding property, topography, whatever it might be. It's the disfavored form of the, to be sparingly granted. It's all about equal protection.
And two forty-two sixteen, views and vistas kicks in the variances, right?
Variances is our special permit.
No, that doesn't...
They are totally different.
They're not covered under that, though.
No. Variance, variances are all about equal protection. The application of the zoning bylaw to my property deprives me of equal protection, because I have a topographic feature or soil feature wholly distinctive than, than the surrounding parcels in the same district. And the example I always give is that I have a subdivision, and I have all these nice lots. But my lot has a big boulder in the middle. So glacial erratic. Everyone else has nice, a movey lot, washed plain sands. But I have a big, huge granite boulder in the middle of my lot. It would cost me, it'd be a financial, it'd be a hardship for me, financial or otherwise, to blow it up for my septic system foundation. So the application of the law to my parcel is not, I need a variance so I can put my house off to the side, closer to the sideline. That's the example I always give when we teach the class, of what a variance is used for. It's not for, well, the kids are getting bigger. It's a little too expensive to bring them to Cape Cod now, so I'd like to build a pool a little closer to my sideline, please. It's a financial hardship for me. In the town of Utopia, of course, that's what, that's what happens. But variances, very, very, you know, it's really strict, which is why we, you don't want to pursue that. You'd like to have a legislative cure. At the time, and you can vote, okay, it might be a special permit, which is much more discretionary, that this board might issue, or another board might issue, just like we do for a lot coverage. And you may go through a process. You have this coverage by right, this coverage by special permit, it might be you have this height by right. And if you can show views and vistas and neighborhood and blah, blah, it might be a discretionary permit to go up to fifty-five feet if it's not really adversely affecting something. So that's something to think about. That's what I clicked in my brain there for disaggreging by panel, and then you, it could be more complicated.
Right. Variance is always heard by zoning board.
Yes, they're the primitive.
They are the ones, they're the only ones that can hear, hear a variance, right?
They're the only ones. They are the primitive granting authority to look at the section six there. And there are special permitting authorities that could do this for in the select and the zone.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question for Brian about the field trip. How different are the structures in Situit compared to what we have going on here now?
Um, let's see. What kind is it? Just so they can go up. Well, if you want, if you're around the South Shore, or I'm trying to think of other places to go, Situit's been facing this for twenty years.
Yeah.
They actually have federal money in Situit that people get to elevate these structures. There's some, the federal government will actually pay you to elevate them, because it's cheaper for the federal government to do that than every time it gets us northeastern to go and pay for a new house, or the insurance, or whatever it might be. So they actually have a program that either buys the house outright, or will reimburse you if you do certain flooding. And they've been doing this since nineteen ninety-seven. That's a big incentive to stay in a flood zone.
Right.
And that's a real policy decision this board has to discuss. You know, do you want to actually have that as a program that Situit has? I don't, I don't buy into that. My sense is, if you're going to afford some waterfront property, that's where girls take risks to take. But, you know, we'll see.
Which is evident by a lot of people up the heights who rush to get permits now to avoid that, so.
Right. So why don't we, why don't we work on this some more for you? If you, I'll, try to get some pictures.
Yeah.
Of Situit for you.
Yeah.
City trip.
There we go.
And maybe just a review of what their bylaw is and how they've handled it.
Okay.
All right, we're finished with that for tonight. The next is committee updates and reports. Pat, would you want to start with the...
Well, we've moved along further with the historic character. We have what we think is an acceptable goal, acceptable goal and three policies. And at our meeting tomorrow, we're going to be working on reviewing that, seeing whether we still like it, and adding, starting to add action items. But along with that, I had thought it might be instructive if we start looking at what we'd like to see in the introduction to that. Because sometimes we do that to help us formulate action items. So it's a back and forth on that. So that's where we're going to be tomorrow on that.
Paul, how about yourself? Any committee, any representative?
On the twenty-ninth of July, there was a meeting of the Water Quality Management Committee. And Dr. Howard made a presentation on the Falmouth estuaries, specifically the McGansett and Skudin Teak Harbor estuaries. It was very interesting. They completed all sixteen estuaries in Falmouth. And they're conducting the analysis now and will forward. It appears that in McGansett, one small area that needs to be addressed, but the rest of it is fairly healthy. But it was a very interesting presentation, a lot of discussion from, from that committee. The second one is, the Community Preservation Committee is in the process of reviewing, I think there's thirteen proposals for funding. Unfortunately, the aggregate total is twice the amount, amount of money that's available. And many of the proposals are from the town of Falmouth. So that process is ongoing. And Thursday, they're going to begin making decisions on some of those items. The biggest one is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the irrigation system at Falmouth Golf Course, which in essence represents seventy percent of the available funding this year. So that's a big issue. But the process is ongoing. There were some very good presentations over the last several weeks. But the decision is going to begin this week, on which one's going to be recommended to the, to the town.
Anybody else?
I have a quick one on the EDIC. We're moving ahead. The proposal for, or the RFP, for the request for proposal for the clerk of the works that we need to hire has been sent out, and the responses are coming in. And we're really close to the closing, just a day or two away. Next, next week, we should, meeting should, that decision should be made. It's geared up so we can make a decision soon. And then the other request for proposal for the architect is drafted and getting ready to go out. So once those two things are in place, then, then committee meetings will start. Input, you know, we'll be reaching out to everybody in the town and whatnot. But until we get those two things secured, that's the first step we're working on right now.
For the bus station?
The bus station, sorry. This is for the bus station. There is also still in the works, the solar field at the landfill. And we have put in a request to Julian to put a placeholder in. And, well, I want to ask the selectmen if they want to first bring forward, getting permission to, to do that from town meeting. So first, we need, you know, selectmen's approval, and then it goes to town meeting. So those are, they're in the works, nothing imminent, but they'll all be happening the next month or two.
Okay, all right.
General correspondence. The, I guess, the fiftieth anniversary of Cape Cod YMCA has sent an invitation, June eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. They're out a little early to let us know that they're having a black tie affair next, next spring. This is the fiftieth anniversary of the Y. It was in the file. And then there's a notice from the Cape Cod Commission regarding some amendments of, changes of fees. And there'll be, it doesn't say what's fees in particular, but if there's a website, if anyone wants to look up, see what your, the other Cape Cod Commission fees are, you should go to the website, because they are changing their fees. The notice is out. Other than that, those are the only two things that were in the correspondence file. Anything else, Brad?
The next meeting is the eleventh, and we'll probably be in the eighteenth and/or the twenty-fifth. So we're trying to advance the, now that I have the guidance about advancing this flood zone stuff. For sure, you're meeting next week. For sure, you're meeting on the eighteenth. And depending on how much you get, you might not be the other twenty-fifth.
And do we have a date certain yet for the joint meeting with the selectmen, or is that still moving? You can say no.
I think I have a date.
Okay.
I guess reluctant until, I guess, the final...
That's a maybe.
So I have definite, yeah. But there is a date being discussed. I want to tell you because...
Instead of date certain, so we don't have one. I worded it that way intentionally, because it's been moving.
We're hopeful that tomorrow, I should know tomorrow.
Being that there's nothing else on the agenda, yes, Ralph?
I just, a request from the staff, if we could get an updated version of our roster with the new dates, and the two people were elected in the spring and a few other, a few little changes there. And also, the office cranked out this planning board committee assignments. You made a nice, a nice chart. I don't know whether Joyce did, probably Joyce did it, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
And it's real nice, but it's twenty fourteen instead of twenty fifteen. So if Linda could just crank out those and send them to us, that'd be great.
Sure. We'll do.
We're going to talk again about future items on the agenda as well. It's not on the agenda here.
But you, go ahead, you can bring it up. We can't discuss them, but what else? Do you have something to bring up?
We're suggesting things for the...
Yes.
It'd be nice to have some information on the status of these projects that are going on in town, both Cape Cod Commission and the private transportation report, if we can see when the next meetings are coming up and what the status of that is. That'd be very helpful.
I would know tomorrow, hopefully, about the joint meeting. First, I'll tell you, I can tell you this.
We don't have to discuss it now. We just need to bring it up on them, so we know what's going on.
The next meeting will have the dates.
We haven't heard anything in a month, so. We haven't heard anything in a month, so.
Okay, we will let you know for sure, next meeting.
All right, sir.
Cool. Anyone have a motion?
I'm with the chairman.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All set? You're in, all right, thank you.